So thanks for being here. The paper that I'm presenting today is called Household Production and Inequality in Living Standards in the U.S. from 1965 to 2018. So kind of what motivates this paper are two, I think, trends that are pretty well-known. The first is rising earnings inequality in the U.S. since the 1970s. And this kind of, so household market income inequality tracks earnings inequality fairly closely. So you see this widening gap between the top and the middle. So a rising 1950 ratio and a somewhat smaller kind of divergence between kind of the middle and the bottom in terms of household market incomes. The second trend is that we've also seen a very big increase in women's labor supply. And as you can see from the graph to the right, a lot of this increase is among women who are relatively well-educated and women who also tend to be married to higher-earning men. I think, so in terms of putting these two things together, I think kind of where we want to contribute is to this, is kind of talking about the declines in household production that accompanied this increase in female labor supply and what that does to living standards and what impact that has on inequality. So in terms of the research on household production time and inequality, I think the consensus is that because household production time tends to be relatively uniform across households and is also valued at a relatively uniform rate, it tends to have an equalizing impact on household income inequality in the cross-section. So this is something that's fairly kind of well-established, I think, in the literature. But I think what is not looked at as much is whether household production has, household production time has also buffered the increase in inequality over time. So the three papers that we're aware of, so none of which cover the period up to 2003, so they all tend to start pretty early. And we, and these papers also tend to have kind of problems in terms of missing out on certain components of household production time or in terms of using income variables that don't really capture inequality very well. So the question that we're then asking in this paper is one, how, so one, how household production time has changed between 1965 and 2018 across the distribution of market incomes? And second, so we, so we, so we want to have some way of incorporating the value of household production time into household incomes, and we do this using an extended income concept. So extended incomes, as we use them here, are simply market incomes, so household market incomes plus the value of household production time. And I'll talk a bit more about how we construct that variable. And so we want to see how trends in this extended income concept compare to trends in market incomes. And then finally, how trends in household income inequality as measured by extended income inequality compared to trends in inequality when we just look at market incomes. So the data that we're using to get at information on time devoted to household production is the American Heritage Time Use Survey. So these are national time diary samples from 1965, 1975, 1985, and 1995, and then another one in 1998, and then you have the American Time Use Survey beginning in 2003. So not all of these, so the American Time Use Survey is collected by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, but the earlier time use surveys are collected by different academic centers at these different years. So they aren't kind of perfectly comparable. But in terms of kind of measuring these broad trends in terms of housework and childcare, they have been used to look at trends over time. So what you can see in this graph over here, and this is something that's also kind of consistent with the rest of the literature using this data, is that we do see a big decline in the, in time devoted to unpaid work by women. This is mostly coming from housework, and in fact, there's a slight increase in childcare time, especially given declining fertility. This is actually increased in the amount of childcare per child, but that's, and then you do see a small increase for men, but not enough to counterbalance the decrease that we see for women. Okay, and we define unpaid work simply as housework plus childcare. And these are really the major components that would be considered unpaid work. Now, the problem with relying only on the time use survey data is that the income variables often tend to be very coarse. So you could have income, household income, that's divided into seven categories, and then these categories themselves also change across surveys. So it's really difficult to get a good picture of changing income inequality across households if we just rely on the data from the time use surveys. Another problem is that they also usually collect time use information for just one member of the household, right? So there's then also, if you want to look at household kind of time devoted to unpaid work at the household level, there also needs to be some way to figure out how much unpaid work other members of the household are doing. So the kind of, the solution that we, that we, that we then adopt, which is again, something that others in the literature do, is to rely on the American Social, so the Annual Social and Economic Supplement, so the ASAC. And this is kind of the standard kind of workforce survey dataset if you want to look at household incomes. And we're using household market income, which is total pre-tax, post-transfer money income for all household members in the previous year. We, in order to combine the time use survey data and the ASAC, what we do is we predict unpaid work time for each adult in the American Heritage Time Use Surveys. The observed covariates that we use for the prediction exercise are those that are common across both the ASAC and the time use survey. So we use age, household composition, education, marital status, own, your employment ours and your spouse's employment ours, and we run these regressions by gender and year. We are able to assess the quality of our imputation for some portion of our sample. So this is, these are kind of, these are kind of individuals whose ASAC data can be linked back to their American Time Use Survey data, so we can actually check how well we're doing in terms of the imputation, but we can only do that for this subset. And then we define household production time as the sum of all unpaid work by household adults. The equalization that we adopt for market incomes is the square root scale. We use a different scale to equalize household production time, simply because we would assume that children absorb a greater part of household unpaid labor than adults. So the equivalent scale we use here is the number of adults plus twice the number of children, and then we take the square root of that. But we do have a number of exercises in the paper where we kind of check for robustness to this particular equalization process. So we, we, we give adults and children the same weight, we give children an even higher weight, and then we remove economies of scale, so most, so our results hold across these different exercises. Okay, in terms of, in terms of how, so as you would expect, we do see a decline in household production time between 1965 and 2018. This decline is, looks pretty similar across the income distribution, though we do see a slightly bigger decline at the bottom and the top of the distribution for market incomes. And, and then we need to have some way of combining the value of household production time and incorporating that into, into the income measure. And we do that using the extended income concept. So this is simply market incomes plus the value of household production time. Now, the really key thing in this entire exercise is how we value household production time. And the approach that we use here is, 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 is a replacement cost approach, which is also used by the Bureau of Economic Analysis as it constructs the household satellite accounts for household production. And the replacement cost approach is simply what it would cost to purchase these services in the market. What we do here is we use, we use, we use the hourly wage for housekeepers and cleaners for each time period, but we also do robustness checks where we use state-level minimum wages and then to look at, to look at this picture, and nothing changes very much. So given the decline in household production time, what we do see is declining value of household production relative to 1965 levels. Market incomes, of course, increase on average, but given the decrease in household production time, we see that average extended incomes increase a lot less than market incomes. And this here is really our key result in terms of what happened to trends in inequality. So we're looking at trends in percentile ratios. So how did the 1910 ratio change for market incomes compared to extended incomes? And of course, the inequality in extended incomes is lower than inequality in market incomes in any given time period. What we, what we find is that the rise in inequality has been greater for extended incomes than it has been for market incomes. We also use, we can, we also use the Gini index as a robustness check instead of just the percentile ratios, and we find a similar, a similar result. Now, what is really, like, what is the intuition kind of behind the result? It's simply that over the period that we study, we see the value of household production time declining. Now, this has a proportionately bigger impact for poorer households because, because household production tends to, tends to be a bigger share for, in extended income for poorer households. To put it slightly differently, in the cross-section, household production time buffers inequality, and because household production time has declined, this buffering effect has declined as well, right? We do an exercise where we try to hold household production time constant at 1965 levels, conditional on observed characteristics, and then of course, we see a much smaller divergence between market incomes and, between trends in inequality in market incomes and extended incomes. We also do, we also look at inequality across different types of households. And what we see is that we have the smallest gains in extended incomes for single-parent households, who usually tend to be single-mother households. So we see a 22% drop in the value of household production time for single, single-parent households compared to only a 4% drop in the value of household production time for married-parent households. Both types of households see a similar increase in women's employment. So you see an increase in paid employment for single parents, and you also see an increase in dual-earner status for married parents. But we, but we think that perhaps the presence of a partner helps kind of balance time constraints a little more. We also do some exercises where we include approximations for the time that you spend supervising children, which often tends to be a much bigger component of total time devoted to unpaid work than simply active childcare. In terms of next steps, I think we, we, we want to kind of consider robustness to valuation exercises. And I think we, at this point, we're kind of thinking about how to discuss opportunity cost valuations, which is of course the other big way that you could, the other alternative approach that you could use to value household production time. I think conceptually, this, this doesn't make sense, partly because of, because opportunity costs only pin down the marginal cost of household production time, not the average cost, which is what we want to get at. And they also only pin down the marginal cost when you don't have kind of constraints on labor supply. So I think conceptually, there are problems. But of course, and then when we kind of, when we do this, this exercise, what we actually see is that men, that the value of household production coming from men and women is roughly similar, right? Because men's unpaid work is then valued at a much higher wage. And we also see a big increase in the value of household production time, because we see a decline for women and increase for men, and men have higher wages. So we see the value of household production time actually increasing at a higher rate than the average market wage rate. Any suggestions about inequality measures or also alternative concepts for living standards in terms of consumption or different measures of income would also be very, very welcome. Okay, so I'm going to stop and, yeah. Too many appendix slides. Okay, great.
Thanks, Leila. I think that's, you know, a great presentation of a great paper. I'm gonna try to be brief. In terms of strengths, I just want to quickly summarize. I think the topic is really important. There is increased recognition that we do really need to think about time use when we're thinking about inequality. So this paper contributes to this important area. And I also think you've done a great job in terms of a very thorough analysis on very high-quality data. I'm not gonna do more on summarizing and talking about contributions, because I think you did a great job on that. And I'll just focus on a couple of main suggestions. So firstly, kind of touching on what you were talking about a moment ago, I think it would be really interesting to see a robustness with the opportunity cost approach. And I take your point about the fact that the replacement approach has some advantages, but I do think there are reasons to think the opportunity cost approach might be better in some ways. I also think depending on how you measure the wage, it doesn't have to be the marginal value of time, it can be the average, so happy to discuss more later. But I think the fact that the results are quite different depending on what valuation approach we use is actually interesting. It's not a limitation of your approach, it's something that might prompt future research to kind of focus in on how should we value time, which is very hard and very important. Secondly, I think it would be valuable for you to slightly sharpen the framing on exactly what type of inequality you're interested in and why you've chosen to focus on that. So when I think about the value of domestic work, the way that I think about it intuitively is in terms of how much we're consuming. And so I would have imagined your approach more with a kind of expenditure survey approach, so you have like material consumption, time-use consumption. And I think there are good reasons to do this kind of extended income exercise, but I think it would be really valuable to motivate your choice slightly more. And finally, in terms of, so I think these three, you should be able to do quite easily within your data and framework. The third is just, a few times in the paper and also in your slides, you mention living standards, and I would be a little bit cautious on that, because your data doesn't really allow you to talk about living standards. If we think about all the technological changes that we've had over this time period, time-saving changes, the fact that hours in domestic work have declined doesn't tell us that much about standards of living. So I would either kind of perhaps remove that, or if you think it's really core to your contribution, then maybe you could bridge that a bit more, kind of give us a little bit more on why you think that is the case. Do I have another minute for some? Okay, so these, I think, are kind of quick things that you could do within this paper. One slightly kind of broader thought, which I think maybe is more for future work, is, you know, going back to this idea that it's hard to value time. Reading your paper, I kept thinking, it's so hard for us to claim that every hour of domestic work is valued in the same way. And I think this, you know, it's not a limitation of your paper, it's just a kind of general issue that we face when dealing with time use. I'm not really thinking about differences in productivity between people, I'm more thinking about the differences between tasks. You know, if I were to pay someone to come and clean my house every week during working hours, that would be reasonably cheap. But if I were to get someone to come to my house in the middle of the night when my baby wakes up at an unpredictable time, that would be prohibitively expensive. And there are lots of other examples of this. So just to say, I feel like there is more to do, and that that could really help us measure the value of time use more accurately. And I feel like in time use data, we have a lot of richness that we could exploit. You know, we can use detailed activity type, when an activity was done during the day. So that feels like a very kind of interesting potential extension to your work. I have a few more things in here, but I think they're a bit detailed. So I might just share these slides with you and give other people a chance to ask any questions, or I can share more thoughts if there are no questions. Yeah? Okay, I'll do that. Fantastic. So my other, my other thought also on kind of improving the measurement of the value of domestic work is, you know, in time use data, we see how many hours were devoted to domestic work, but we don't really see the output. And that's quite different from work, where at the end of the day, you get paid a certain amount. So we might be able to see how many hours you worked, but we also have a sense of the actual value of that time from how much you're paid. And so thinking about people who might have excess time, say someone who is temporarily unemployed, actually has a lot more time on their hands, might just kind of dilute chores over longer periods of time, or do low-value chores that are not necessarily adding to the standard of living of a household that much. And then they get back into work, and then they condense more or less the same value of domestic work into much less time. I just, that's another exercise that I think would be interesting, harder to do, but potentially would require some kind of survey information on the quality of, you know, the cleanliness of a house, et cetera, how it relates to hours, or maybe capping the number of hours for each activity. Anyway, yes, thank you. Great paper. Enjoyed reading it.
Hello, everyone, and thanks for coming. The title of my presentation today is Income Equality and Earnings Dynamics in Ireland. This is joint work with Brian, Tara, and Brad, and the standard claimers apply. To understand, so this paper is basically trying to understand earning dynamics, and it's important because the interaction of earning dynamics and the aggregate economy can reveal how workers are rewarded and how each individual are tied to the aggregate economic. But to really understand the general pattern of earning dynamics would require more evidence from different institution setting and also from different economic context. While all the evidence in the literature used to rely more on those cross-sectional data, and also because the different choice of methods, it is a lack of comparability when we're in cross-country. So there is a one project that aims to overcome this data limitation, which is the Global Repertory of Income Dynamics, the GIRID. It is an open-access international database that focuses on the macro statistics at the individual level. And now Ireland is currently prepared to join the phase two, which is basically, this paper is the, basically this is a work in progress for this preparation to join this project. This project generally features three, and when it comes to data, it is longitudinal, administrative, and granular level of data. And also because it's, we aim to have a cross-country comparison, so we also really focus on how homalized the method is. And there's three aspects of the earning dynamics this project focuses on. The first is inequality, basically look at the gaps of the earnings level, and also look at the volatility, basically look at how dispersed earnings growth it is across, over time, and also look at the rank change in the permanent income distribution, which is basically the mobility as the last focus of the project. So to give you some context of Irish economy, people are not familiar with, it is, Ireland has a very small and open economic. If you look at the black line, the gap between the black line GDP and the red line, the gross, gross national income, basically that captures the value produced in Ireland that you will immediately leave the country when it's produced, so they have no impact on its real economic. And if you look at the gap between the red line and the blue line, it is actually the value of a transaction of those multinationals residing in Ireland. Again, that have very limited impact on the real economy for Irish economy. So by the time of 2023, the last data point you see is, the blue line is really almost less than one-third of the traditional what GDP captured for Irish economy. Again, this is how, one of the Irish, the feature of the Irish economy. And when it comes to the, actually, the real economy is also very changing during the time. They have a very notable convergence during this Celtic Tiger period, but they have a really deep contraction following the 2008 global financial crisis. And when it comes to the labor market, Irish labor market, it is actually also very sensitive and very volatile over time. As you can see, the male unemployment rate peaked, hiked to almost 80% in 2010. So it's again, very sensitive, a very volatile labor market in Ireland. So what this paper is trying to do again is prepare to join the GIRID project, and we really want to know who are the winner and loser, particularly during this post-crisis period, and particularly if Ireland shares any similarity with other countries that is included in GIRID project. One of the features of this paper is that we actually have access to the first ever available panel earning data in Ireland, so we're able to actually do some analyze when it comes to this kind of dynamic analyze. So talk about the dataset. It is, the name of the source is Earning Analyzed Using Administrative Data Source, EID. It is based on the tax return form from the employers and we, and from the Irish Tax Authority, the revenue. So we have the 10% of all the tax return form. Basically, we have the 10% of all the employment in October. And also based on the definition of the earning that is measured in this dataset, we basically exclude all the self-employment, and we also have the outline at the two N trimmed when we hand over to us. And because it's administrative data, so we have a very limited covariate that I can play with, we only have the gender, age, nationality, and the one single-digit industry classification of the employer, and we do have the residence of the employer, and we, we know, and we can know if it's, it is in the public or private sector. And all the results I'm gonna show you later are in a real term, which is deflated using the CPI using 2018 as the base year. Again, the deflator choice is also followed the GIRID guideline. So this is a very simple summary statistics for the real earning level. Just by looking at our preservation is quite even split gender-wise, and we do see a bit of increase of standard deviation over time. But one actually very interesting, just by looking at the numbers here, that from the 10th percentile onwards, there's a very clear and consistent gender pay gap. And although there's a catching up at the, at the top, but it was still, the gap is quantitatively is very large. So now I'm gonna start to show the three set of results. The first is the inequality. Basically, this graph shows the evolution of real earnings for five selected percentile between, for men and women separately. So just by looking at the trend itself, we have very distinct three phases. First, we have this ball-based decline up until 2014, and there's, we follow up the very clear rebound. And then after the COVID-19, the pandemic, we have this flattening out trend in the end. So we just by compare the distance among the five different percentile lines, we see that the inequality basically increased during this ball-based decline period, and that kind of stabilized over time. And one interesting fact that to notice is that for the two lowest percentile, that actually they show a strongest per secular pattern, as like, they decrease the most when it comes to decline period, and they grow the fastest compared to other percentile. If we move on to the top earners, they actually show a very different patterns. We, during the decline period, there's basically a very limited negative impact on those top earners, and if not, they actually even grow faster or grow more toward the end of the And if not, they actually even grow faster or grow more and toward the end of the period. But more interesting that for female, that's a very significant catching up in the end of the, at the end of the data period. It's actually a same pattern that we observe from using the German data. Okay, but again, just remind the summary statistics table that although the growth rate is high, but actually the quantitatively, there's still a very large gap between men and women. So now we might move on to the second set of results, which is volatility. Basically measure how different or how dispersed the earnings growth it is among different workers. It is actually very, there's a, for female, as you can see by the red lines, actually have a higher level of dispersion. But the overall, the trends for both gender are kind of co-moving over time. So we don't really see any gender pattern when it comes to this period. But we do see the dispersion does increase during the decline period. But then it's again stabilized over time. And now we move on to a higher order moment when it comes for the earnings growth. That basically your left-hand side is a KDI skewness, which measure how symmetric this distribution of earnings growth is. As you can see, both of that basically positive value. So in the way we interpret that, most of people experience earnings growth during this sample period, except the COVID-19, although a man does have higher level of growth rate. So the excess cortisol is basically measure how concentrate or how concentrate the earnings growth it is around its mean. As you can see, the basically there is a very clear downward trend for the cortisol. That means that over time, the earnings growth rate tend to evolve around its mean and become less dispersed over time. And then we decompose this volatility by the permanent income distribution as indicated by the horizontal axis and by age, which indicated by different color lines. Now, we do see this dispersion of earnings growth does decrease by, decrease with the permanent income level, but it somehow vary a bit with age. And more interesting that younger cohorts do show greater level of dispersion when it comes to earnings growth. And then in terms of the trend, that there's definitely less convex for women compared to men, male workers. And when we do this decomposition exercise for the skewness, we feel, we find a very noisy evidence. Basically, it's, it's very hard to tell with any part in the trend that from, from this two graph. But it's actually this kind of evidence very consistent with all the country that included JRID. So in a sense that we say, this is, Ireland basically does not stand out when it comes to the skewness decomposition, which is very different pattern we can find for the cortisol. Because basically we find that the dispersion early change does increase with permanent income level and with age too. So put another way around, the younger cohort that work or what, that have lower earning does have very similar earnings growth rate or this experience very similar earning progression in the, in the early career. So the very last bit of result I'm gonna show is actually the mobility. Basically, we just, we want to know if your position in the permanent income distribution changed over time. On your horizontal axis, it is the individual rank in their permanent income distribution at the current year. And the vertical axis, it is your individual rank in the permanent income distribution in five years' time. So the 45 line, 45 degree line shows that if you are on the 45 degree line, it means that your rank in your permanent income distribution does not change in five years' time. So if, again, if you're above the 45 degree line, it means that you, your rank move up. If you're below the 45 line, then you move down. So while this graph shows that, of course, there's a clear revision towards the mean for the entire permanent income distribution. And second, that there is a very clear upward mobility at the bottom and downward mobility at the top. And there's a bit of gen, age difference, but for, at the gender level, it's actually very, almost identical at the two for, for both genders. And actually, one interesting point that for this, that the 40th percentile that where the mobility swept, the mobility kind of have the flipping point, is a very consistent across all the countries that including in JRID. So basically this is kind of universal rule when it comes to mobility for this type of measure for mobility. So basically, this is the, what we have been documenting so far. We have, we basically follow the JRID project and document three aspect of the early dynamics. First, we found that for Irish worker, there's, there's a increase in equality during the board-based decline period and then stabilize over time. And the volatility in the earnings growth does vary with age and permanent income. And the very last bit that there, again, Ireland is very consistent with the funding for, in Ireland is very consistent with other countries that there's more mobility, there's more upward mobility at the bottom, but downward mobility at the top. And again, just if compared to all the core results with other JRID countries, Ireland's basically set your position in the middle of the pack. And that's what I have so far, and thank you very much for your attention.
Oh, that's not me. I haven't got any slides. Thank you very much and thank you for the opportunity to comment on this paper. It took me back to some research that I did on earnings inequality and earnings mobility many years ago and some of it with Richard Dickens, where we used their new earnings survey panel dataset, ASH, and the lifetime labor market database. So it was quite nice to sort of go back and think about some of the issues that we were tackling and we were grappling with at that time. First of all, I'm not going to run through the key findings. I think you did a brilliant presentation. I don't need to do that. I've already got five minutes. Your data source, there are strengths and weaknesses with it, of course, with all data sources we have this. It's administrative data, so it's of high quality. You have a 10% random sample, which is excellent in terms of the sample of the populations that you're covering. So employees, not in agriculture and so on. There are weaknesses. Human capital variables are missing. You have very few demographic variables and so on. You also don't know about hours of work and you don't know about weeks of work. There's no information on this. Although if I have time to come back with this, from after 2018, you move from the annual tax return to end of year tax return to having real-time payroll reports for each pay slip. So you potentially have monthly reports there, which I think you could use a little bit more. And I think you do have information on the number of employers within a year because each of the employers submit a payroll return at the end of the year. So you should be able to look at how many different employers an employee has over a year. Might want to use that. Now, this study is, we've heard, is really a replication study. In 2022, there's a special issue of the Journal of Quantitative Economics, which use data from this data source and the methods that you're using. You extend it, so we now know a lot more about Ireland, which we didn't have before. Also, one of the advantages of what you're able to do is you can go up to 2023. A lot of those studies finished in 2020 or before, so before COVID and the cost of living crisis and so on. So we can learn a bit more from, you know, extending that back. You're limited at the moment because you only go back to 2011. And it would be great, and I was very glad to hear that you were, you're going to be going back earlier than that, possibly back to the 1990s. Now, as it is largely a replication study, I'm not going to go over the methods and so on, but I'm gonna push you because I want more. The earnings metric matters. We didn't really hear anything. You don't talk about that in the paper. So you're using annual earnings. And as a bugbear of mine, I really would like you to talk about earnings and not income, unless you want to call it employment income. I think we should be stricter with ourselves how we use the term, the terms wages, earnings and income. They mean different things. If we have a common language, I think it's really helpful. Now, there are important differences between which metric of earnings you use. You don't talk about that and I'd like to hear more about that. Hourly earnings, wage rates, you know, can be a proxy for productivity, your earnings power and so on. When you move to weekly or monthly earning, it captures both wage rates and the hours worked. Then when you move on to annual, the longest period of which we normally look at earnings, it combines information wage rates, your working hours and the number of weeks you work in a year. There's lots going on there with annual earnings. And I think you need to think about these metrics when you're interpreting the findings in terms of inequality, mobility and so on. Because this is really important, particularly with the time series over this period where there are a number of shocks. So yeah, I'd like to see a little bit more of that, thinking about what the drivers might be and how they might be different for different metrics. Now, the period you cover, you've got, as you showed, the unemployment rates, they start very high. And, and then they, they fall and then you've got the, after the financial crisis. As they decline, of course, more employees have, go into the labor market. They have part-year earnings. That's going to affect your measure of annual earnings. And inequality can go up as a result of that for annual earnings. In recessions, actually often earnings inequality for annual earnings can, can be lower because it's more homogeneous group of workers who are in work. And we know that the lowest skill, lowest paid, most disadvantaged workers are more likely to lose their jobs in recession. They're going to pull out what I think is the most important bits. Of course, in the UK, and I think it's the case of Ireland, the Great Recession was unusual in that what we saw was real nominal wages falling rather than unemployment increasing as much as it had done in previous recessions. Was that the case in Ireland? I'm not sure. Consequence in the UK was the labor market recovered quicker, but real wages took more than a decade to recover from that. So it's quite unusual in that way. And at the end of this period, you've got this unusual shock of the COVID-19 pandemic, furlough and a different response there. Now, I suppose, given that these, these unusual shocks and responses, I worry a little bit about estimating permanent earnings. Okay, because we've got quite unusual things going on. I'd like to hear a little bit about that, what you think about that. And then, because I've only got a couple of minutes. No, less than that, less than a minute. I've got to stop. Gender, I would like you not just to compute different distributions for men and women. I'd like to see the whole distribution and understand where women are in that whole distribution. When you say that they sort of fanny out and women catching up, we, we don't know because there are different points to the distribution. 99th percentile for women is much lower down the overall distribution than it is for men. So in terms of what I would like to see, I'd like to see more sensitivity analysis. I'd like to see whether you can look at multiple employers over a year using that information. If there's a break in the series after 2018, that would be great. I'd like to see these percentiles across the whole distribution, understand where women are. I'd like to see more on the analysis of the role of unemployment and these, these shocks and the differences of these shocks. I think you could tease out that a lot more. But great paper. I really enjoyed reading it. So thank you.
So thank you for being here. My name is Beatrice. I'm a fourth year PhD student in UCD in Ireland. So I'll be talking about Ireland as well. And I would like to thank Professor Daniel for the invitation. This panel was super nice. Thank you. And today I would like to talk about the problem that we have, which is why the boys tend to outperform girls in maths at the end of secondary school. And then for this, I'm bringing attention from Ireland. But most importantly, I would like to focus on when these differences start to appear and what's behind it. So we can begin with this question. Why do boys tend to perform girls in maths at the end of secondary school? Is it because they differ in skills? Is it because they, they are rewarded differently for those skills that they have? And what's the role of the environment in shaping those differences? So in that, that case, the dependent variable here is the Leaving Certificate Maths Points in Ireland, which is the entrance level, it's the college entrance level exam. And I'll be analyzing the rules of different skills versus different returns to those traits that I'll be talking about and also how this, this contribution changes between childhood and adolescence. And what's the influence of family structure, particular parental involvement, which brings us to the team of the panel about inequality and whether sustained father absence impacts boys and girls differently. So the method I'll be using here, it's, it's mostly used in labor economics to, to calculate. In this case, it's more about gender wage differentials. In my case, it's gender achievement. And it's a method that was pretty much brought at the same time by sociologists and economists. And what it does is that it's a decomposition method, right? So it compares regression model across groups, which in my case, I'll be having two, two different decompositions here to answer what would happen if group A had the same characteristics as group B. So you can define those groups as you would like. And then it splits the, the outcome gap, which in my case, it's maths achievement, into what those groups bring to the table. And then you can define whatever you would like about the variables. And then also into coefficients, which is a measure of how the system and the environment responds to those traits that they have. And also interactions, which is a mix of endowments and coefficients. I'm gonna be applying this decomposition method to both gender and father, to calculate gender and father absence gaps. And because I have a longitudinal sample with four waves, I can see how that decomposition changes between the different waves. And I choose those two points at age nine and age 30 because one's primary school and the other one's secondary school. And then there's a transition from childhood to early adolescence, which is a key period for developmental in kids. And then that decomposition also helps us identify when and where those key differences, diversions emerge. I'll estimate gender gaps for girls and boys and father absence effect. So I'll be comparing boys and girls with absent fathers and present fathers. Just a little bit of background, as Coon hinted at the fact that Ireland sucks a little bit when it comes to very, you know, good data. So the growing up in Ireland was the first longitudinal data, the longitudinal data set that we had, was the first study that we had. My, the, the kids that I'll be analyzing were all born in between 97 and 98. The growing up in Ireland has a second cohort, was born, which was born in 2008. But it's the longest running longitudinal study regarding kids that we have. We have more now, but that's, that was the first one and the longest one. We'll probably get wave five by the end of this, this quarter, which means that I can then extend this analysis that I did to analyze differences in labor market for those kids. And then I'll be using data from wave one and wave two and then from wave four as well because that's the one that followed after the, the exam that they, they had. And because it's a decomposition method, you can actually select the variables that you want, obviously based on the fact that they matter. So I ran OLS first, I double-checked everything. But again, I was kind of constrained in terms of the actual variables that I could get out of the state. So from wave one was when kids were nine. I can extract two cognitive variables, both for reading and maths. For SDQ scales, here SDQ is the Strength and Difficult Questionnaires, which is a psychometric assessment tool that measures behavioral issues in kids. And then I have education, I have data on the education of the parents, on the household income, and I only have one school indicator. We don't have more than that. But for wave two, I can get one more cognitive variable, the same SDQ scale measured by the mom. And then again, parental education, income, quantiles. But then I hear I can have more school indicators. So I'm able to assess the, the study child in a more, in the school context. And so why does this matter for us? I think I'm preaching to the core here, but early differences in maths achievement have long-term consequences for college majors, then following by labor market, differentials as well. And we all know that both cognitive and non-cognitive skills are super important. and non-cognitive skills are super important in the labor, human capital production function. And then, we will analyze how the same traits are rewarded differently across genders. That's what the decomposition allows me to do. I can then pinpoint when those gaps emerge, which allows for better target intervention because you never know when to intervene and how. And then, we all know, obviously, the parental education and father absence shape skill development through several channels. And understanding this pathway can informs us on debates on inequality and social mobility. And structural shifts, obviously, in the labor market have made school success more important in general. And when boys underachieved, it mattered less in the past, but now falling behind in education has long-term costs. So, again, my dependent variable is maths scores at the Leaving Cert, which is the equivalent of the A-levels here. And I'll be using predictors from wave one and two when kids are nine and 30. And for this decomposition of the gender gap, because remember that decomposition is as if you were running two regressions for each group, right? So, on the first one, I control for father's education. No, I don't, I don't control for father education, I only include the moms as a variable. But then, on the second model, I include father education. So that would allow me to see what was the effect of the father education on the overall gender gap. And then I can assess whether the gap is driven by the endowments or the coefficients, or both at the same time, but this is more like in terms of quantity. And this design then helps us identify when this gap solidifies. Do early differences in treatment later manifest as skill gaps? So these are the results for the gender gaps in maths achievement. So on the y-axis, we have the estimated contribution to maths points, so it's girls minus boys. So that's why we're seeing a negative contribution because that means that boys score higher in that. That's why we have a negative one. And then, let me just see if I can do this. Yeah, I can do this. So here, I cannot move forward. So here, on the dark green, I have the results for wave one. You see that the largest share that is driving that gap between boys and girls is from the coefficients, meaning how the kids are re-ordered for the same skills that they have. And then, if you analyze for wave two, which is the purple one. So you analyze the darker one with the dark one and the other one with the other one. You see that there is a shift in what was mostly endowments, now turns into coefficient by wave two. And then, so, because it's an OLS, right? So it's average. I did the decomposition for the quantiles as well, but this is just the average. So boys outperform girls in maths by five points on average. And most of the gap comes from the coefficients, meaning that girls' skills are re-ordered less. That's for wave one, when kids are nine. For wave 30, most of the gap comes from the endowments, meaning that they differ in skills themselves, right? So before, it was how they are valued for those skills, and then later is the skills themselves. And then, I didn't put here all the tables that I had in the paper because they were very long. But, so the biggest, the strongest contributors to that gap by age nine is maths ability and by age 13 is numerical ability. And some variables act as a cushion. For example, girls' score lower in hyperactivity and that gives them a large advantage when it comes to the gender gap in relation to boys. So what this suggests is that we have a transition from what was before an unequal treatment to real skills developed by adolescents. And the second decomposition, I compare kids with present fathers to kids with absent fathers. And my definition of absent here is that we didn't have information. So this is a longitudinal sample, right? So, since my dependent variable was collected at four waves, we are kind of look backwards. So I don't have, for example, information on the kids that dropped out of the sample. And that's one of the limitations. But also, that's kind of telling because I could tell from my analysis that the kids with absent fathers by wave two were more likely to drop out of the survey by wave four. So, all these estimates are more conservative in that sense. So, yeah, so here we're comparing boys and girls, as well, girls with absent fathers, with girls with present fathers, boys with absent fathers and boys with present fathers. Again, I ran the decomposition for wave one and two predictors. And the goal here is try to understand whether those father absences affect boys and girls differently, that's why I separated. Which mechanisms, endowments, coefficients drive those results? And whether maternal education kind of compensates in some sense? This is all based on the literature. And then you also might say, okay, absence from the survey doesn't mean, doesn't mean that they're absent from the home. But in 80% of the cases, that's what they, what it means, actually. Because I have the more data from the survey, so I could check that. So again, these estimates are conservative. So here, on the y-axis, now we have a change. It's the estimated contribution to maths points, father present minus father absence, so it's the average here. And then, as you can see as well, it's all positive because that means that both boys and girls with present fathers scored lower, scored higher, sorry, on the Leaving Cert and by a large amount. But the skills and the returns differ between boys and girls and between wave one and two. As you can see here, for boys, the dark blue in wave one, it was mostly, it was kind of a fair share between skills and returns. But by wave two, we have an increase in skills and then a lower on the coefficients. And for girls as well. For girls, we had a larger share of the returns in wave one. And then by wave two, it's mostly skills. And then for girls, this was the only significant estimate that I found for interaction, which was for girls in wave one. So father absence here is linked to maths, large maths penalties. But again, it's on average. And when you do the decomposition by quantile, you see that the biggest difference is in the middle quantile, where kids in the lowest and the highest for present fathers and absent fathers, they are very similar, but the biggest difference is in the middle. And then for boys, both endowments and coefficients drive the penalty at both ages. But for girls, mostly coefficients at age nine plus interaction effect. And it becomes more balanced by age 13. And again, this difference is quite well backed up by the literature on developmental for kids and behavioral economics. So boys are more vulnerable to family instability, where girls benefit more from sustainable family resources and support. So, the story changes with age. In this case, boys consistently outperform girls in the Leaving Cert, but why changes significantly? By childhood, the gap is mainly due to different returns to skills. And by adolescence, the gap is primarily explained by the differences in the actual skills. And what we can take from here is that early treatment matters. Initial differences in how those skills are valued seem to become real skill differences over time. So there's a possible pathway for some interference there when kids are younger. Cognitive skills here are key. I didn't do the every single decomposition, but it is. And we have a potential mechanism to explain this. So, like, why is there a shift, right? So there's lots of things I can kind of explain, not exactly to pinpoint. Because again, this is not casual inference or anything, it's just more decomposition. And factors like teacher expectations, peer dynamics, stereotype threat, and self-efficacy likely play a role in this evolution. The impact of father absence, it's very large. And for boys, the penalty involves both lower skills and lower returns. Whereas for girls, they did advantage when they're younger, mainly through lower returns and challenging interactions, which is kind of difficult to infer from that. And by age 13, it's a mix of skills differences and returns. And contextual factors matter. So we know that maternal education, family resources appear particularly important and how father absence affects skills outcomes. So it actually acts as a buffer and which aligns with existing research, which supports findings on boy sensitivity to family instability and the role of parental investment for girls. So, the key here is to intervene early and separately for boys and girls because they differ. Yeah, that was it. Thank you. The feature is next.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Beatrice, for that really, really interesting talk. I wanted to start by putting this study in context. So we know that in many countries, girls are substantially and increasingly outperforming boys in the education system. This is data from PISA, looking at reading scores pretty much everywhere, girls are doing better than boys. But, that's often not true of math performance. And actually, Ireland is a really good case study for this because Ireland looks a lot like the OECD average in that maths gender gap. And we think that this is important, like Beatrice says, because we know that early math skills are highly linked to later earnings. This is just one example of that from some work done in England, which shows that when you look at age 10 skills in math and in reading, you look at age 38 earnings, then what you see is that actually those math skills are persistently important and persistently more important than reading skills, even after you control for a huge range of demographics and other characteristics. So getting this early maths gap right is really going to matter. And that's really important kind of motivation and framing for this paper and for why this study is important. So in Beatrice's work, she's asking when and how the gender gap in performance in maths school Leaving Qualifications arises. And in my view, there's a lot to like about this. The paper combines really good data, I don't think you should be so negative about the Irish data, really good data for this purpose, interesting empirical work, and particularly nice is a strong theory-driven explanation for the results. This I've cribbed from Beatrice's paper directly. And I think that it really does a clean job of encapsulating what she finds. Early educational experiences create advantages or disadvantages that build up over time. So really drawing on that Cunha Heckman Shenach kind of model of dynamic complementarity. There's a lot to like about this paper. And so my comments are going to be mostly about exposition to help showcase those features. Now, Beatrice showed you this lovely chart. It's very colorful and it does a really clean job of summarizing what she finds. For my money, I think there's some really fascinating detail that's buried in the appendix tables as well. And so, if you look at the kind of regression results that underpin that graphic, this, I think, tells you the main story Beatrice is trying to tell. So if you look at wave two, numerical ability, you see that there's not really any significant effects happening for coefficients. If you look at wave one, when those children are younger, you see that there is. And I think that's kind of underpinning what this paper is trying to sell. I do think that there's some really interesting stuff within these appendix tables. So even if you just zoom in on that wave one maths ability, yes, it's true that the coefficients are significant and later they're not. But actually, those endowment effects are a lot stronger and a lot more significant. And so I think there is some nuance there about not totally discounting the role of those early skills. Another aspect of these appendix tables, which Beatrice kind of touched on quite briefly, there's some fascinating information about a wider range of skills in here as well. I picked out hyperactivity. And here you see that actually, there's a couple interesting things going on. First of all, these are much more similar. So the returns to these social and emotional skills are much more similar across these two waves. Second, these are really big. These are really big effects, particularly when you compare to the math effect. So I think that's an important note. And third, if I'm reading the table right, it looks like while girls are sort of negatively selected in terms of math ability, they're actually also negatively selected in terms of hyperactivity, which is a really interesting finding and not something that we often see in many other contexts. And so for me, I think what this paper could do is really zoom in on those skills and really focus on the contribution it makes in terms of skills. The main decompositions are kind of combining both these skills and these socioeconomic variables that all, we get presented with all of that all at once. But actually, I think you could take a step back and really build the reader towards this and not undersell the fantastic data that you've got. So, for example, why are girls so negatively selected in their socioeconomic characteristics? The girls in this study are, they have less educated mothers, they come from lower-income families. Why is that? Is there something going on? And who's actually taking the Leaving Cert? Are girls really scoring worse on hyperactivity? And what's the distribution of skills just descriptively look like for these different groups at these different ages? And how does that relate to later attainment? All of these are kind of descriptive points that would help us understand the data and the context. And so I think you could start by just documenting the raw gender gap in skills and Leaving Certs, then running your decomposition just for skills and only then building in the SES. I also think there's fascinating work in the appendix looking at the reading results. So in particular, we've got a positive gender gap in reading and negative gender gap in math. What can we learn from that? Do we see symmetric results? And if not, why do we think not? How do these endowments and these SES effects contribute to both of those things? So, summing up, the paper shows relationships between skills and qualifications differ across gender and change over time. And I really do like the use of economic theory to really help guide the reader and understand where these results are coming from. The question itself is substantively interesting. What is it that's different about math? And there are implications for policy here as well, which I think are drawn out nicely in the conclusion of the paper. So I'm really grateful I had a chance to read this paper. And I think there's a lot to like here and it's really just about polishing and building that story further.
Is that your first slide?
Yeah, I mean, there's, go back, there's a title beforehand.
There you go.
All right, so I organized the session, so I just want to thank everybody for coming and especially for all the participants and discussants for agreeing to be part of this. So my paper's joint work with Chris Parmeter at Miami. It's definitely changed, the paper's definitely changed since I gave it to the discussant. This is actually part of a special issue that's coming out in Empirical Economics for Robin Sicles, who did a lot of work on inefficiency over the years and has helped myself and Chris a lot. So the question is pretty simple. Where we care about measuring inequality is all the previous papers have made the case clear. And so, to do so requires us, one, to come up with good measures of inequality. And that was some of the conversation about some of the earlier papers, about thinking carefully about how you actually want to measure inequality. But then conditional on having a measure, we have to come up with good data that allows us then to compute those measures and have the results actually be meaningful. And so anybody who knows what I do, I care a lot about measurement error. And so the focus on this paper is in particular on one challenge, which is dealing with measurement error when we want to compute measures of inequality and we only have access to survey data that contains self-reported earnings and other measures of income. And so that's the idea. How important is measurement error for measuring inequality? And if it matters, what can we do about it? All right, so high-level overview of what we do. We proposed a structural model, and I use that very loosely, for both the data generating process for how earnings are determined as well as how the measurement error enters into the model. And we're going to allow for different parts of the observed distribution to have different data generating processes as well as different measurement error processes. And so then we're going to estimate this heterogeneity in a very data-driven way, akin to allowing for structural breaks with unknown breakpoints. But here, it's going to be breaks in how the measurement error affects the income distribution at different parts of the income distribution. And to do this, we're going to rely on stochastic frontier models. That I'll show briefly if you haven't ever seen them before, as well as OLS. And then the goal is to use the structural model to then predict quote-unquote "error-free" measures of earnings and then compare our measures of inequality using both the observed self-reported earnings as well as our predicted error-free earnings for each individual in the sample. And we're going to use census data from the US. And then the ACS is what replaced the census in the US. All right, so really quick background. There is actually a ton of work on various data issues when it comes to computing measures of inequality. Misreporting being one of the main ones. But then also dealing with imputation, top coding, non-response. A lot of these things that government statistics, we have to deal with a lot of times. So a long history, but just a really brief, high-level overview of the literature. There's really two types of solutions out there, two types of groups. One, that has access to administrative data or some sort of national accounts data and brings that into the analysis. And then solutions that rely on just having access to survey data. And so the first branch that combines survey and administrative data has been broken up into what now is referred to as the first generation and second generation. The first generation essentially took the administrative data as the truth and then just matched survey data with the administrative data to see how badly the survey data differed from the administrative data. But then took measures of inequality based on the administrative data as the truth. More recently, then, people have moved on from that and don't longer want to assume that the administrative data is necessarily correct. And so now there's more mixture-type models that allow for some measurement error in both survey data and as well as the administrative data. Having access to administrative data, we don't all, aren't all so fortunate. And so a lot of us have to rely on survey data. And so then methods that purely rely on survey data undertake these three kind of broad types of solutions. Reweating observations, that's particularly used to deal with non-response. Replacement are various ways of replacing what we think of as erroneous data with better values. And that's usually focused on measurement error among the really the rich, the upper tail of the distribution. And the basic gist in those types of papers is to use data from the middle of the distribution to fit some parametric model and then predict out a sample for what those high incomes should actually be. And then where our paper fits in is in the last one, these kind of structural approaches that try to then predict what kind of error-free income or earnings actually are. All right, so to do so, like I said, we use the term structural loosely. It's just kind of standard labor stuff that we're used to. So the data generating process for earnings is just a simple log linear model. So the Y star there indicates the truth. The star indicates that it's latent, that it's not what I see in the data. So the log of true earnings, it depends on some Xs like we're used to and then a normal idiosyncratic error term. So the Is are indexing individuals and the Ss indicating groups. And I'll explain what the groups are in a second when we get to the right side of the slide. But otherwise, yeah, it's just standard. So then we introduce measurement error in a very simple way that is just additive. And so the Y without the asterisk is our observed self-reported earnings in the data. And so eta then is the measurement error that says what the difference is between the self-reported earnings for person I and what their true earnings actually are. So then to put some structure on the measurement error eta, we're going to allow for it to be what we call weakly one-sided. So it's a function of U and then U is strictly, is non-negative. So it's greater than or equal to zero. And then it's broken down like this. And there's actually a typo, there shouldn't be a minus S in how we define eta. But so basically, what we're going to allow is, early on in this literature, the presumption and then a lot of the matched administrative self-reported data showed that there was mean reversion in earnings. So low-income people tend to exaggerate their earnings and high-income people tend to downplay and under-report their earnings. And so that's what this is allowing, but in a weak way so that we're not imposing that we have to find that. All right, so what it means is the three groups are defined by this S. So there's some threshold, some cutoff parameter CL and then some higher threshold parameter CU. And what we're going to assume is that below CL, anybody with an income below CL, they're either going to over-report their earnings or report truthfully. And then the upper cutoff is going to be anybody with income above that is either going to report truthfully or under-report their earnings. All right, and anybody in between, then they report truthfully. All right, the key thing is we don't want to choose that CL and CU. Like, I don't want to impose what they have to be. And so that's where the kind of structural break literature comes in, that we're going to essentially do a grid search over that to find the optimal choices that best fit the data. All right, so if we take the two parts of the model for observed income and then the measurement error part, for true income and then the measurement error part, we end up with this model that looks like this. And what it is, is a standard regression model, except it's got two parts of the error term. It's got our traditional two-sided idiosyncratic error term in the V part. And then it's got this one-sided error term in the U part. All right, and that one-sided part will allow for either the one-sided error at the lower part of the distribution, that's the over-reporting, and then the one-sided that's under-reporting at the upper end, if those exist. All right, and so that's where the link to Robin's work and where this paper comes into play is that if you're not familiar, that's the exact type of model that people use when they're modeling inefficiency among firms. And so there, in that context, the Y is some production function. And then the UI is a measure of how inefficient a particular firm is, how much below their production possibility frontier they're producing. But we can just recall it measurement error and then use the exact same model. And it's very nice for handling this type of potentially one-sided measurement error in the outcome variable. In order to implement it, though, we do have to make some strong assumptions. Future work, we can think about relaxing them. But we have to parameterize the two parts of the error term in order to be able to decompose them. So we assume the V is just a regular IID, two-sided normal variable, normal error term. And then the measurement error comes from this truncated normal distribution, where we do allow for heterogeneity in the conditional mean. We allow it to depend on some Zs that are subsets of the Xs. All right, importantly, very importantly, we're not imposing that there has to be measurement error. The model can nest both mean reverting errors, classical measurement errors, if the U is really symmetric, or no measurement error at all. And it can be estimated extremely easily in lots of software today that has just a basic stochastic frontier model. All right, so the algorithm, this is what it lays out. So we pick initial guesses for what the cutoffs are going to be, CL and CU. And so for each proposed cutoff, we then estimate a stochastic frontier model that would potentially allow for over-reporting below CL and then potential, a stochastic frontier model that allows for potential under-reporting above CU and then estimate an OLS model in between. All right, we can compute the log likelihood function from each of those three parts of fitting the three parts of the distribution. And then the optimal choices are just going to be the ones that maximize the joint likelihood function of the entire, of the entire distribution adding up across the three different estimations. And so we're going to do a grid search to make it a little bit more manageable. I'm going to assume that the CL is at values below the median and then C star U comes from values above the median. And we're just going to do a grid search. We do 50 points for each of them, so it already takes a long time to run. And that's what we're going to do. Once we find our preferred model, the preferred choices of C star L and U that best fit the data and what type of model in each of the three parts best fits the data, then we have our preferred models and we can then back out an estimate of the measurement error, if it exists, for each observation. And then given that, we can then predict what their true earnings actually are. And then we can compute measures of inequality using both Y and Y hat star to see what effect it has. All right, so the data, like I said, it's US census data. The sample, we restrict to males, working age, employed, not self-employed, not an unpaid family worker, not in the military. We do use earnings. We are careful in the paper, at least now, to define exactly what the measure of Y is and what the question are in the survey. So this is earnings inequality, which includes wages as well as other forms of compensation from an employer. Co-variance are just kind of standard stuff from labor. So lots of demographics as well as what region you live in, industry, occupation, education, marital status, household size, all that kind of fun stuff. All right, so then the results. The first thing to look at is for measurement error. This is for the white subsample. I always had to rerun everything last week and I didn't have everything done when the slides were due. So this is just for the subsample of white males, but the full sample ends up looking very much like the white males. So this is a plot of measurement error against the distribution of their predicted true earnings from each of the different censuses. And so this picture is just mean reversion. This says that the measurement error at the low end of the distribution is positive so that they do end up over-reporting their earnings. And the measurement error in the upper end is big and negative. And so they massively under-report their earnings in the upper tail. So then just flowing through them quickly. So then in 1980, 1990, we get this. And so importantly here, now we start to see a middle section where there is no measurement error, where OLS is the best fit for the middle part that doesn't allow for this kind of one-sided measurement error. But we still see extreme measurement error in the tails. All right, once we get to more recent times in 2000 as well as for 2023, there's no longer any measurement error. We don't find any measurement error in the upper tail. We only find measurement error in the lower tail, except for 2010, which was in the aftermath of the Great Recession. And then we find huge amounts of under-reporting in the upper tail as well. All right, so then we can go to measures of inequality. And this is not a great picture to make sense of. But the blue lines are five different measures of inequality using the observed income, observed earnings that are self-reported. And then the red ones are the corresponding ones using our predicted earnings. And so the main thing is the red ones are always above the corresponding blue ones. So inequality is definitely worse when you use our predicted earnings versus the self-reported earnings. But kind of more important than just that are more subtle findings is one thing is you see what the red lines at the top, they're trending downward. So inequality for a while from 1960 to 2000 was actually improving using our predicted earnings, whereas the blue ones are slightly increasing. So we actually get a different trend in inequality than, in inequality than what you would get if you ignored the measurement error. This is the same thing, but it just plots the ratio of the predicted measure of inequality to the observed measure of inequality. So one thing that's interesting here is the one that does the best, it's the least affected by correcting for measurement error, is the Gini coefficient. I have no, I didn't try to look at the math to figure out why, but it's affected the least by the inequality. And the other thing is just the huge increase in inequality during the Great Recession. And so another kind of punchline from this is it looks like during the economic downturn, we way underestimate the increase in inequality that was occurring during the Great Recession. All right, I'll skip that in the interest of time. Not shown, but just other results. For non-whites, we actually find that there's very little measurement error. So the measurement error is driven definitely way more by whites in the sample than by non-whites. We also look at whether or not our approach can also handle imputed and top-coded observations. So we do it without and throwing them back in. And it seems to actually handle those types of measurement errors as well. And we also look at a different measure of income. We actually now use total household income. And we find much smaller amounts of measurement error there. And that's consistent with a lot of the prior literature that actually, when you look at combined household income, a lot of the measurement error for the individual components cancel out and you find smaller amounts of measurement error there. And so it's kind of comforting that that's what we also find in our approach. All right, so that's a summary of just what I said. And this is still, I think, a good research project because there's lots of extensions that we can consider to look at sensitivity and all sorts of stuff like that. And I will stop there.
Wonderful, thank you so much for this. I'll preface my discussion by saying that I'm actually a developer. I'm a mathematician, so a lot of my comments are going to be based on basic misunderstandings. So bear with me. So when I was trying to think about the comments that I could make, I decided to divide it into kind of like two topics. So the first topic is, for me, what was really interesting is trying to understand this misreporting issue and like why people would misreport. Because to me, that's kind of underlying like how much measurement error we should add or subtract from what's going on here. So if I understand the method correctly, it was like conditional on your reported income, conditional on these covariates, conditional on whether you're, which group you fall into. This magnitude of misreporting is due to this random draw from a distribution. So there's this kind of distributional assumption going under it. And so then to me, I was like, well, how do we know that that distribution accurately represents this misreporting? So for example, is it that conditional on X and conditional on being in, you know, this assigned group? So S equals negative one, that's kind of like the wealthier tail of the distribution. Is it that, do wealthier people under-report more of their income? So we should see greater measurement error the further we get away from the middle. And I think that's what your graphs were showing. And so I was wondering whether that is true or that's just the distributional assumption that's imposed. Another example I could think of is that, okay, so maybe I am either very small because I make a mistake in how much I think my income is. Maybe I forget that I have some dividends or, you know, maybe I just forget that I'm earning slightly more this year than last year. So I make small mistakes or I make strategically large mistakes. So this might be like hiding income because I don't want to reveal that I have more income than what I do. And so I was really just wondering like, why is there misreporting? So in the paper, you had one explanation of this like social desirability bias. And I think that that was referring to the bottom half of the distribution is that people want to seem richer than what they are when they're poor. And so I was just really wondering like, why would people misreport to a data collector? Like, you know, it's a government or like an official person, but like, kind of what is the motivation there? And then how can we use this motivation to better understand like what the underlying distribution of this measurement error should be? Another question I had was, you have quite a lot of covariates. And I was interested in how much, how important these are for explaining income. Because again, if I understand your regression correctly, you have true income and then you have these covariates and then you have measurement error. And so if the covariates explain a really large share, if they represent a really high R squared, then you're by default have only a small leeway for measurement error, if I understand correctly. And so I was just wondering how robust these results are to like different Xs? Like, if you have a few Xs or many Xs, does that change anything? And then obviously different distributional assumptions of you. Since the paper is forthcoming, this is probably less interesting or less useful, but I will continue. So if I, when I was reading the paper, I was thinking, okay, what's the main contribution here? And to me, the main contribution was to use this new method to address measurement error in incomes. And this has many advantages over previous methods. And so then you can use, you know, this method to generate different estimates of true inequality. So if that's kind of like the goal of the paper, then how different is using SFA to other methods? Like, why should I believe that SFA is going to give me more accurate results? As opposed to say, for example, some of these standard methods that you see, such as reweighting. And so then the direct policy implication is if you want to sell this paper to people who are going to use it, how do you sell that? Like, why, how do you say like, this is a better way of doing this and it's going to result in something that is more sensible? To me, when I was thinking about the goal of the paper, race seemed kind of like a side quest. And so I was wondering like, maybe it might be better to motivate why we should expect more or less reporting by race? That was somewhat less interesting to me than the general results about the extent of inequality. It wasn't obvious to me why, like, once you control for income, why would one group misreport more or less? So that was another comment I had. Maybe you've addressed this in the revised version, but to me, I thought household income was super interesting. So the main results that you showed were on individual male incomes. And then you have a very small section at the end of the paper, which is on household income. And to me, I was like, oh, my God, this is like, why isn't this bigger? Because as we know, composition of households and labor force participation is changing over time. And if we think about, we have marital sorting. I would imagine that household income is actually increase, inequality increasing over time because you have wealthy partners who are selecting to be together and then poorer partners which are selecting to be together. And so I would imagine that inequality is increasing. And if both of these partners are reporting are reporting their income with the same type of measurement error, then this is going to even more spread out the distribution. But actually, what you find is the converse. And so then, is it that women are doing the opposite of men? Like, I didn't, I wasn't sure why, where this offsetting was come from, like, why would household income not have hardly any measurement error, but male income have a lot of measurement error? Like, are women behaving differently to men? Maybe I pretend to earn way more than what I actually do when my partner, my male partner does the other strategy. And I was also interested in kind of like this time dimension. So in the paper, you found that there was no measurement error in more recent years. And so then, why would households become better at reporting over time? That was very interesting to me, because to me, income is actually becoming more complicated, especially if you become richer, because you have way more different sources of income. You've kind of moving from standard salary-based incomes, which are the same every week, more or less. And then when you become richer and with more complex financial systems, you have much more complex income. So to me, those were the things that I found interesting and hopefully will be of use. Thank you very much. [applause]